That's why I always only let seven chairs up here. Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:03 PM. It is Tuesday, June the 15th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Rachel?
Present.
Rizzo?
Present.
Tobias?
Present.
Coach?
Here.
Flores Kill?
Here.
Ellison? Ellison?
All right. Six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a public comments form and submit that to myself or the city secretary. I have two registered to speak before executive session. The first is Mr. Randy Graef.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Dale Pearson and I represent the family that is selling this land that we're going to be talking about in regards to the Kyle Master Transportation Plan. And mayor, if I may bring out a handout. This is a sort of hard-to-read copy of the land that we're talking about this evening and where it's located. Hopefully, you can see it outlined with the white dots on it. Copies didn't come out all that great. So, I'm here tonight representing Randy Graff and Petra Landry, who are actually Kyleites before there was Kyle. They're fifth-generation area landowners and grew up in the area and representing their interest in 455 Opal Lane, which is walking distance from historic downtown Kyle, just down Main Street. And both are present tonight at the meeting. Last week, we were made aware of an effort by the city of Kyle to propose a six-lane arterial street through the center of their 117-acre tract of land. This awareness comes after several years of the family, the sellers, and us working with them and talking about the eventual sale of their property and into residential usage. And as we already mentioned with the city staff, we were never contacted by a consultant or staff regarding the plan changes in the Kyle Master Transportation Plan or the ownership wasn't notified of the meetings, including the meeting tonight at 5:00 and the meeting, of course, at 7:00, to discuss the proposed highway through the land. So, we heard of it indirectly. The proposed plan has already caused significant and documented damages to the selling family, and we strongly oppose the alignment as shown in the recommended changes in the Kyle Transportation Master Plan update of June 1, 2021. So, your consideration in that will be greatly appreciated.
All right. Thank you. Sorry if I didn't say that correctly.
No, you did say Graef. Thank you.
Okay.
A little nervous, so please bear with me.
No worries.
Again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thanks for giving the opportunity to speak. As Dale mentioned, we're Kyle people. We go back five generations. Our parents, our grandparents, great-grandparents, were born here, they grew up here, they went to school here, they raised their kids here, had businesses here. And again, we had a great tradition of living in Kyle. I want to speak specifically about my grandfather, Alex Crutchfield, and his wife, Rachel. They were active in many community organizations, very strong supporters of the voluntary fire department, the library, and other nonprofit agencies in the city of Kyle. You could ask someone in Kyle about my grandfather, they would say three things. He's an honest man, he's a man that stands by his word, and he's a friend to everyone. My grandfather worked hard. He bought free tracts of land, which we're discussing now. Personally, my sister, Petra, myself, my son, Alan, my son Kyle, and Petra's daughter, Lexi, are owners of the property. We've worked hard over the years with the city. When the city put in a water tank or water tower on Opal Lane, we allowed a water line to proceed through our property. The city needed a wastewater line, and I'm sure you're aware of the Elliott Branch. We worked very closely with the city to negotiate for the benefit of the city and gave approval for an easement. I drove by there today, matter of fact, and it's great seeing the progress on it. At the time this was negotiated, the city made several requests, and we mentioned we wanted to subdivide the property eventually. They thought it would be a great idea. They gave us some ideas that they wanted walkway fairness to the historical district, and this was a great opportunity for the city to proceed with development for the property. They also granted us 350 LUEs and writing for future development of the property. We had delays because of certain issues with the wastewater line for various reasons, which delayed our attempts to sell the property. Another issue came up with the initials K.M., which I'm not going to mention their name. We also caused us delays. We finally resolved those issues. The city's made great progress in getting the wastewater line through. We've had numerous and numerous offers for that property. It's the hottest piece of property in Kyle. I regret to say, once this came up, our buyer has not been able to proceed with their plans to develop the property. So, basically, we're not able to proceed with them. We're not able to market the property. We were devastated. I can't imagine why you'd want to put such a large road through that section of the city. It makes no sense. All the tax revenue from a nice development, one that we made a commitment or the developer made a commitment to extend Main Street through to Opal, which would help with the traffic. But given the situation, if this road goes through, basically, it turns our property into a, how do you say this, a cemetery for easements and roads for the city column and makes the property virtually worthless to us. We hope that you think about this and you look at other options. I think for the best of the city, moving that road would, everybody would benefit. I can't, again, I can't imagine putting such a large road through the middle of town. It makes me, reminds me of some of the cities north of Austin. And lastly, speaking about this, I just want you to think about two things. One, about your moral and your legal commitment to our family, and also, what's best for the citizens of Kyle. We firmly believe that this road going through that section of town is not for the best citizens of Kyle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. It is now closed. Next up, executive session.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as seen necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation or to seek advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071; milestone, PID, sign code; automated metering infrastructure; downtown utilities; Texas-Lehigh agreement; city lights and Kyle marketplace subdivision and development; transportation master plan; site-specific declaration of covenants, restrictions, and easements for Hero's Memorial Tracks; BB Road Development Agreement; and convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects in the city that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city.
We're going to go and get started now, please. First, we're going to adjourn our executive session. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. And so, we're going to wait for the feeds to switch over, and then we will gavel in our regular meeting. Good evening, everyone. The date is Tuesday, June 15th. It is 7:05 PM, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
Present.
Flores Kill?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Rachel?
Present.
Tobias?
Here.
All right. Seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make motion to approve the minutes for our city council special meeting, June 1st, and regular meeting on the same day.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilman Rizzo, that we approve the minutes as listed. Is there any discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct your comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a public citizen comments form and submit that either to myself or the city secretary. I have three who have registered ahead. First up, Hoyt Barnett.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Research has shown that first impressions are important. They actually do matter. I have had the pleasure of moving to Kyle 19 years ago, and I live in Bradford Meadows, which is off of Sledge. When I give directions to people to come to this city, to come to my home, I tell them to get off the interstate, go to Front Street, go down the south and take a right, almost without exception. Everyone says, "That's Front Street?" It doesn't look like a Front Street. It looks like a Back Street. I wish we could put in curbs or something to make it look, I mean, the right side, the north side, now that we've got this new building, looks nice. You've got curbs. The left side does look like Back Street. I wish we could find some way to find money to make the left side match the right side and look a little more like Front Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Krista Pfeifer. I don't think I said that right.
That's right. That I sneaked an O in there. It's that extra I.
Pfefferer?
Pfefferer, perfect.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Couple margaritas, it's Pfefferer. Thank you, guys, very much. I'm testifying this evening. Do we call it testifying? Sorry. I'm a legislative person. In opposition of item number 19 on the city council's agenda regarding rezoning the land on Scott Street. My name is Krista Pfefferer, and I've lived in Kyle, called it my home for 14 years. But actually, for most of that time, I've worked in Austin or San Antonio, so more aptly, I would tell people that Kyle's a place where I slept for 14 years, and those other cities were basically where my life was. But not anymore. Now, I have three kids in public school and preschool in Kyle. We participate in Hays Sports. We're active in our church, and I serve as board chair for a charter school that's opening in Buta in 2022, with plans to build a campus here in Kyle in the future. I want to begin by saying how thrilled I am with our city's very ambitious vision for growth, turned into reality by this city council. The beautification of our town square, our trendy new spaces for eateries and shopping, and bringing in these major investments and employers to set up shop here, I see these as all wins. And under your leadership, Kyle is truly becoming the place where individuals and families like mine can live, work, and play. We're reaching the next level, and my purpose here is to encourage that as we reach that next level, we pause. We pause to enjoy it. We pause and assess it, and we pause so that when we've taken a good look around and we've seen how far that we've come, we know how to bring it to the next, next level. I worry that our community is being paved over by new residential subdivisions, single-family homes, and apartment complexes. It's worth noting that according to Hays CISD, our elementary, middle, and high schools are already at or above capacity, and the district has shown preference for Buta when it comes to bonding and building schools. Our schools need a pause. A pause so they can catch up, a pause to assess, and a pause to map out how they'll get to their next level. This particular piece of land off of Scott Street is next to my daughter's Montessori school. I can't tell you the delight when we pull up most mornings and there's a neighborhood cow sitting there chomping, having his breakfast right there by the fence. We used to see families of deer across the street until the stagecoach neighborhood was built. We'd take our Bluebonnet photos in the fields just outside of our Plum Creek neighborhood before the apartment complexes went in. These were little moments for my family where we paused and we enjoyed where we lived. And I know they can't last forever, and growth is giving us new opportunities. Kyle is reaching the next level of a community where we can live our whole lives, but I'm worried that if development is allowed to continue at such a feverish pace, I think we were just called Boomtown, that we're going to literally pave over our ability to create the environment and amenities that our residents enjoy. I hope that it begins with this application, our pause begins with this application for rezoning on Scott Street. But if it doesn't, I hope that you'll consider future requests to build, and whether they are indeed critical to our right now to meet your present-day goals for our growth as a council. And if they're not, maybe we can pause. Pause and enjoy what we have in motion right now and leave room for Kyle's next level. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jane Kirkham.
Good evening. I am here with a request for the city council. In the late 1950s or early 1960s, my father planted four trees in the, what was then the city square of Kyle, to honor four citizens of Kyle. And at the time, they were marked, some were marked with cement rings, which inhibited, eventually inhibited the growth and were taken away. And then, in 1976, during the nation's bicentennial, during Kyle's celebration of that, he planted two additional trees across from what was then the bank, and which, before that, had been the site of his business for 30 years. He planted two more trees there. And all of the markings for these trees have been taken away either by neglect or necessity because of the tree's health or just because they were put there in 1960. And I am asking the city to mark these trees with, you know, to signify whose honor they were planted, in whose honor they were planted. You know, I don't, that's, I would like them marked in some way. The trees in the city hall were planted in honor of RJ Sledge, Alex B. Crutchfield, Mayor Kyle Hartson, and Lex Word Jr. And my father was Lex Word. And then, across the street here, they were planted in honor of Joe Stewart and Laverne Allen, all early, longtime residents of Kyle. So, that's what I'm requesting, to these trees to be designated, re-designated as for whom they were intended to honor. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. That's all the citizen comments forms that are filled out and submitted. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? Ms. Georgia? Please state your name for the record.
Georgia Stinson. And I was down by Lake Kyle and talking to some people not too far, long, not too long ago, that they would like to be able to have canoes or kayak on the water, but not fishing from them. Just one person in one kayak with a life jacket, nothing motorized, paddles only. And the canoe, the same thing. Two people, the most paddles, not fishing from it, just simply using the water. And what they told me was, "We all pay taxes for this. We should have this." And I have played fishing at the corner, you know, throw the line in, but there's a lot of people that would like to have their kayak or canoe in that water, because they said to me, "We all pay our taxes. We should have this." So, that's my, that's my statement for today. And I was in a fishing boat the other day, but not with, you know, no, actually, I'll take that back. I was on the shore fishing my line out. But anyway, they would really like to have that, with a kayak or a canoe. So, there you go.
Thank you, Georgia.
Yeah, that's the fine right seat, too.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. Next up, agenda item number three, Juneteenth proclamation.
Thank you, mayor. All right, so, as has been the case the last four years, I'm presenting the city of Kyle's official Juneteenth proclamation, 2021, and I want to thank my colleagues on the council for the support for this proclamation. And I will go ahead and read it. Oh, before I do, one thing that I've been trying to do with all of my proclamations this year is talk about origin stories, how each holiday began, things like that. So, that is a big spirit of what this proclamation was written for. And then, I do want to say that we will be having the Dialogue for Peace and Progress this Friday evening from 7:00 to 8:30 to further celebrate Juneteenth, which will be this Saturday, as well as just having open and honest discussion as we started a year ago. And then, we will also, the Kyle Public Library will be having a Juneteenth celebration starting at 10:00 AM Saturday, Juneteenth, with a virtual tour of the Smithsonian. So, if you have an opportunity to check that out, I'd highly encourage it. All right. The city council proclamation for Juneteenth. Whereas, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor. The freedmen are advised to remain quietly at their present homes and work for wages. They are informed that they will not be allowed to collect at military posts and they will not be, and that they will not be supported in idleness either there or elsewhere," end quote. This read in Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865, by General Gordon Granger. And whereas, "The American Civil War started April 12, 1861, and as America approached its third year of the war, on January 1, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, which in part stated, quote, 'All persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state, the people whereof shall then be in rebellion against the United States, shall be then, thenceforward, and forever free.'" And whereas, "It wasn't until December 6, 1865, when the 13th Amendment was passed and made federal law, stating that, quote, 'Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime whereof the party shall have been duly convicted, shall exist in the United States or any place subject to their jurisdiction,'" end quote. And whereas, "We strive to remember and recognize these events because," in the words of former Texas State Representative Al Edwards, who authored House Bill 1016, making Juneteenth an official state holiday, quote, "'Every year, we must remind successive generations that this event triggered a series of events that one by one defines the challenges and responsibilities of successive generations. That's why we need this holiday,'" end quote. And whereas, "Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Emancipation Day, is a holiday that commemorates the announcement of the abolition of slavery in Texas in June 1865, 901 days after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued by President Abraham Lincoln. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Kyle that the 19th day of June should be celebrated as Juneteenth or Emancipation Day, in recognition of Freedom Day and the spirit of Juneteenth that celebrates African-American freedom, education, and achievement, while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures, signed and entered this 15th day of June 2021.'" And so, once again, I want to thank my colleagues for the support on this Juneteenth. This is the fourth one we've done consecutively for the city of Kyle. There have been ones in the past that have been sprinkled throughout, but it's a important reminder of history, American history, that happened right here in Texas. And I was hoping to, with this proclamation, share some of the quotes and words that were used within the executive order and how there was joyous parts of it, but there also was a standard set as well towards how things were still difficult after these orders and proclamations and even the 13th Amendment was issued. But all a part of American history, and I appreciate the opportunity to share that with you all today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Does anybody have anything they want to add? Councilman Rizzo?
I just want to thank Councilmember Ellison for bringing this forward. I always look forward to his presentations. I think this is a very important one. One thing it does bring to us is awareness as a country that's never been perfect, but as we move forward into the future, we can be reminded that we're all created equal, and we should always have love for our fellow man. So, thank you for bringing this forward, Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Councilman Rizzo. Anyone else? All right. We're going to move on. Next up, agenda item number four, recognition of Captain Pedro Hernandez for 25 years with KPD. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, Captain Pedro Hernandez is going to receive the white glove treatment. Let me get this ready. I'm going to stand up. I had heard a story, and staff did a great job, that Captain Pedro Hernandez, back in the day, had a baseball card that celebrated- the day, had a baseball card that celebrated his time with Kyle PD. And so for this special occasion, we have a 25-year anniversary. This marks the month of his 25 years with KPD. On the back, it has many great stats. Now, I'm not the best one to talk about Captain Pedro Hernandez, but I just want to say to you, sir, that ever since I was a member of the Kyle Citizens Police Academy, I have enjoyed knowing you. Then getting on council, I have enjoyed sparring with you and seeing your energy and the way that you demand excellence for the police department in this city, and you want to see it through. And you are a shining beacon and a great example for all your fellow officers, and we appreciate you. And so Councilmember Tobias and Councilmember Bradshaw are passing out those cards. And Chief, I want to ask you to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. So we've got a great night for Kyle PD here tonight, as we have a few items on the agenda, as we recognize staff, but none could be more important at recognizing the 25-year tenure of our police captain. 25 years ago, he joined the police department. He was Officer Number Five. He patrolled the small community of Kyle, oftentimes with no backup. He was the only officer on duty, and he performed all of the functions you could imagine that were bestowed upon the Kyle Police Department, from police officer to investigator to animal control officer to problem solver. He served the city through lean times, and he certainly continues to serve and provide leadership to the community as we continue to grow. One of the things we want to do at the Kyle Police Department is to create an agency that serves as what we call a career agency. That's the kind of place where you come to work when you start your career, and you love it, and you enjoy it so much, and you enjoy serving your community so much, that that's where you want to retire. It's the kind of place where you want to recruit others to relieve you when you do retire. It's the kind of place that you want to leave your legacy. Captain Pedro Hernandez is certainly someone that I have depended on for my tenure here over the last 10 years. He's an outstanding partner at work. He's an outstanding leader in the community and within our organization. We certainly would not be as successful as we are without his guidance and his leadership. And so I will add that 25 years is not the end of his career. I've locked him in to at least 10 more years, so we have a long ways to go. I depend on him way too much, and it is my honor, and I'm very proud to be here with him tonight, as the council recognizes him for his 25 years, his great 25 years of service to the community of Kyle. Congratulations, Captain. You want me to hold that? Are you on target facing? Hold it. Get it down. Thank you very much. I am certainly very humbled, and I'm very appreciative of this. And, you know, Chief did say he locked me in for another 10 years. We're doing the baseball theme, so I'll need to be signing that contract here by the end, by the end of the meeting. I don't know what the sign-on bonus was, but I'm sure we can negotiate that. But I've certainly been blessed beyond what I deserve, and thank you. So, and the city has grown so much. I was the fifth officer, and we did serve as animal control. There was plenty of times, we had to go park the patrol car, jump in the animal control truck. And go, oh, okay. Well, I didn't want to have my back to everybody. So I did have to serve as the animal control officer at times. That's what we had to do. Patrol officer, had to go patrol, park the patrol car, and jump in the animal control truck, and go pick up the animal, and return, and jump back in our patrol car and answer calls. But I just want to thank everybody, all the citizens. The City of Kyle's been great to me, all my former chiefs, my family, current city council mayor, you know, for the continued opportunity to serve. And I'm just really appreciative, and kind of at a loss for words. I really feel humbled, and I'm grateful for every single one of y'all, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue to work for such a great city, you know. You know, when I started in 1996, I'll be honest, I didn't have any intentions of staying here, because there was nothing here. And then slowly but surely, it started growing and growing, and, you know, now I'm constantly recruiting, I'm constantly bragging about the city, I'm constantly bragging about our police department. And just once again, thank you very much, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I am here, we're going to get it. One, two. Try one time to do this. They never clock. They never.
From my 25th, I do appreciate the blue.
Hold the two. Yay, okay. Careful. One, two, 25. Yay.
white shirt and a blue shirt. Kyle PD staff, CPA, alumni, citizens on patrol, he wants to get a group picture with everybody that's part of that KPD band, so.
I'm going to hold the two. You hold the five up there.
Can't take you anywhere.
It was him. Okay.
That's a compliment right there.
I think it says 52. Yeah, okay, just like that. Good job. Yeah.
I think the two's backwards.
One, two, three, still.
Sorry.
And one, two, three, still. Thank you. Can't take that.
Can't take that. All right, next up, agenda item number five, recognition. All right, next up, agenda item number five, recognition of the Kyle Police Citizens on Patrol and the Kyle Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Chief Barnett.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor and Council, again, for the record, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. We are certainly one blessed agency, as we just talked about, our police captain and the service he's provided to the community, and that couldn't be replaced, and we're certainly very proud for him. Another area in which we're very proud of our organization is our citizenry that support us. We have a group of citizens that are members of our Citizens Police Academy alumni, and then those that also serve as our citizens on patrol. And they serve this community in ways that go beyond measure. They support our police officers, our animal control officers, our dispatchers, our records personnel, day in and day out. And they do some really amazing things behind the scenes, and they never ask for credit for it. And they've done so many lately that we wanted to, again, remind the community that you have citizens among you that are serving and continuing to make our community better. I'll start with our citizens on patrol volunteers, of which we have four, and you'll see them behind me in their white shirts. Some may have on cowboy hats if I turn around and look. We have Mr. Frank Schultz, Mr. Robert Price, Mike, Mr. Mike Rubsum, and Ms. Phyllis Kearns. These citizens have all, I hope they're standing back there. Okay, I will get their attention here in a second. So they have all attended our Citizens Police Academy. They have all attended advanced-level training. They have all sworn to go out and serve our community in a citizens on patrol volunteer capacity. They volunteer their time. They come in, they check out a patrol vehicle allotted for citizens on patrol and clearly marked, and they go out and they patrol our community to help keep it safe. We all know that officers can't be everywhere at all times, and these citizens have taken it upon themselves to take the training and become an active member in their community. They've helped out, and I'm going to steal some of Officer James Plant's thunder here, because he provided me some of their notes this year, so sorry, Officer Plant. I'm going to let him speak, by the way. This year alone, they have volunteered 380 hours this year alone, and we're only six months into the year. Just in the month of June so far, they've done 82 hours of community volunteer service. We all know that they help out with the annual Fourth of July fireworks event. They help out with the Pie in the Sky event that's coming up again in September. They help out with the annual Founder's Day parade, and they certainly heeded the call to action when we had our recent winter storm and the ice event. They come out time and time again when we have a vaccination event, or when we have a food giveaway. Anything that this community is doing to help serve our citizenry, they're there to help as well. We are extremely proud of their efforts. We're proud of the fact that they've taken this advanced-level training. We're very proud that we have a citizens on patrol program that's active in our community. We do intend to grow that program in the years to come. Some of you who were on council when we started this program remember that we wanted to get excellent candidates and start the program off in small incremental steps that would be safe and informative for all of the community with good, no, with outstanding volunteers, and that's what you have today, serving on your citizens on patrol program. I'm going to move over to our Citizens Police Academy alumni, and then also I'm going to let Officer Plant come say some great words, because he happens to be our officer who oversees both of these wonderful programs. Our Citizens Police Academy alumni are made of members who have graduated from our Kyle Citizens Police Academy. As many of you know, because several of you have actually attended the police academy or are about to attend the one in September, if you don't know yet, is a great opportunity to interact with all of the members of the police department, whether you're records or animal control detectives. No matter your assignment, you get to come in and you get to instruct a group of citizens who volunteer their time and who want to come in and learn about what we do at the Kyle Police Department. Over 10 or 11 weeks, depending on your academy, you get to be exposed to all of the things that we do. You get to do rideouts, we take you along, we take you on ride-alongs, you go to the gun range. You do a number of great learning experiences with our officers and with our staff. Once you've graduated from that academy, you have the opportunity to continue your service and become a member of the Alumni Association. Behind me, you will see, and if you can wave when I call your name, we have our president, Mr. Pat Gibson. We have our vice president, Ms. Cynthia Bentley. Our secretary, Ms. Phyllis Kearns. Our treasurer, Erin Story. And the historian, Ms. Pam Gibson. This year alone and in the last few months, they've served in many great ways. They do this throughout the year by providing goodie bags, by coming by and offering encouragement to our staff after a difficult call. They come in on the weekends to make sure that our weekend staff members have meals to eat, lunches, and dinners. They do so many great things for our community. Recently, if you've been out in the back area of the police department, you may have noticed that there's a really nice white rock bedding that's been laid down in the back, what you might call the flower bed, the backside of the PD. For over a year now, that's kind of been a little mud pit where the officers walk through there, step in the mud, track in as they come and go from their vehicles in the back door of the PD. This group saw fit, through their own funding, their own work, to go collect that white rock and bring it in and install it, and number one, it looks beautiful. Secondly, it serves a great purpose, because it helps keep our area clean and the boots clean and whatnot at the PD. But it uplifted our morale in the PD, because it showed that the citizens here in Kyle do care about their law enforcement officers and people who serve at the police department. Another thing that they've done is that in our kitchen area, we have a small break area inside the police department. And obviously, the building that we're in was built in the 70s. There has been a lot of upgrading or anything retrofitting to that building over the years, and our kitchen needed some modernization. They came in in order to improve, again, morale of the staff and give the staff a great work area, and they've came in and they've reworked that area and brightened it up with fresh paint. They made the cabinetry look brand-new to me. It looks amazing. They've stocked, over the years, they've stocked our break area with different appliances to help provide convenience to the staff to come in and maybe make coffee, or maybe they want to heat a meal up, or whatever it may be. They provided toasters, they provided coffee machines, you name it. And they do, though, they do that out of their own pocket. They provide those things because they care about the members of the Kyle Police Department, and these people are servants, and we're very, very proud of them. They also come out and help with community events, like our citizens on patrol. They help out during the COVID vaccination distributions, the mass food distributions, the water distributions. And every time we have a special week for our animal control, our victim services, our police officers, any specialty within the department, Telecommunicators Week, there's many. They always come in and provide snacks or uplifting gifts to the staff, just something as a small token to say how much they appreciate that staff and help uplift them while they do their job. We could not be any happier. We have some amazing citizens, and the way that they take care of us is second to none. I'm extremely proud of all of our citizens, police academy alumni members, all of our citizens on patrol members, and they serve in a way that should make you proud, because they're representing you as members of our police department and our volunteer organizations. We are extremely proud of them, and we wanted to bring recognition to them. I would not be doing justice if I didn't let Officer James Plant come up and speak about them as well. He works with them day in and day out. He oversees their programs, and he works with them, and he does an outstanding job on behalf of the PD in making sure that we're doing everything we can for them, because we know they're certainly taking care of us. So, Officer Plant.
For the record, James Plant, police officer with the Kyle Police Department. It's hard to follow that, but I'm just going to say the same thing the chief did. I hope one day I'm just as good of a citizen as these volunteers are. They make my job much easier. They help me understand giving back to my community. I feel that I'm going on the right route in my career that way, but it's just looking at their energy, it's just beyond anything I've ever seen. Grateful, something we really didn't talk about, they're there for us during our worst times. Last couple of weeks ago, we had a funeral for Officer Putnam from San Marcos Police Department. And the day before the funeral, I was asked, hey, can you get me some volunteers together to help at the service? And I made a phone call, and I had volunteers from both groups come to Austin, the Shoreline Church, and we parked hundreds of cars, and our volunteers also helped San Marcos with seating of the guests during that funeral service. And it was with little to no notice. And that was the same thing during our freeze, when we had the freeze and we had the emergency water distribution at Hayes. I made a phone call, and in 30 minutes, I had volunteers signed up and at the station within an hour. So can't say enough about these guys. Some of them may, a couple of them may get, be a little too guarded at times, they have to be rating in a little bit, but I mean, they have the servant's heart, and they just want to see good things happen, and they're all about it seven days a week, if I would allow them to. But can't say enough about them. They're a great group of volunteers, and that's not only citizens on patrol, but our alumni. Thank you, guys, for everything that you do for us. We do appreciate it.
We certainly be happy to answer any questions about that group, but as you can tell, we're very fond of our citizens that are on patrol and then our citizens police academy alumni. They mean the world to us. We just wanted to convey that to you and remind the citizens out in the community how much they mean to all of us. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments?
I just wanted to announce, we have finalized a schedule for the next Citizens Police Academy. It will be starting in September, and the best part of it is it will be Monday nights. So if anybody on council wants to attend the program, this is an open invitation. But in all seriousness, I also, I will send out a schedule once it's finalized and we start the course, and would love for you guys to pick and choose some classes you'd like to come see. And hopefully, you could attend the whole course, but if not, we would love to have you guys on Monday nights, when time permits, to attend some of the classes.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, James. I know my wife and I are looking forward to the classes, hopefully soon, but I just, I think Councilwoman Ellison had us to hand.
Councilwoman Ellison, go ahead.
Thank you. Man, I can't say enough about this group as well. I went through the Citizens Police Academy. I went through the citizens police academy eight years ago, I can't believe, class six. It truly changed my outlook on a number of different things, but it really made me proud of this agency that we have in this city. I could share a bunch of stories that would show proof to that and why that's in my heart and why I see that each and every day. I learned that in my 10 weeks during my class six, and I've been a proud alumni member as well. Officer Plant, I'll probably take you up on jumping in a few of those classes. I don't know if I'll be able to do all 10 weeks again, but I would love to get a refresher, and I can see the commitment from the people in this agency each and every day, from the sworn to the non-sworn, to the volunteers. And Plant and Chief really outlined it, how they step up with very little to no notice. They're always willing to give back and be there for their community, and it truly is an honor to serve with them. I'm in the alumni association meetings, so I attend the meetings every first Thursday or as many as I can, and I love hearing them work. Sometimes I'll just sit back and not say a thing and listen to them work and plan and prepare things, and it's impressive. And I just want to thank them for each and everything that they do, and thank you for this recognition today.
Councilmember.
I just want to thank the COP, the association, I mean, the citizens on patrol and the alumni. Your service in the community is, has no limits. Your heart is out there in service, and I want to thank you for that servant's heart. But I want to just share a story about this past year during the pandemic, during the freeze. There were some times when there was people without food, without water, and when we brought these programs forward, organizing a food drive within 12 hours, and you, the COP being out there to run traffic control within hours was amazing to see it. It was organized. Y'all stand out there in the rain, y'all standing out there in the cold when we're having our food drives, when we're having the early PP distributions, you were out there, when we're out there with the vaccine in the early stages, I mean, the roads being iced over and us sanding the bridges down, and you're standing out there and you're directing traffic. It just leaves me in awe. I know several of y'all are ex-military, and y'all have been serving the country, and now you serve our city. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much for all you do.
Councilmember Floris Cal.
I just want to say thank you. I've had the honor of meeting several of you guys on a one-on-one basis. Citizens on patrol last weekend, when they had the candidates do their physical training test, and they were so great at just encouraging those that were running along, including myself, not to give up and like counting laps with me and just being positive. So I want to say thank you to them, and I want to say thank you to the alumni who really are the backbone for supporting our police officers. On a different note, I also, I didn't get to speak towards Officer Hernandez, who I've had the privilege to meet, talk to, and break bread with, and it's no wonder that so many people support him because in getting to know him, I realized what a great guy he is. What you see is what you get. And so he is who I think our officers look up to, and I'd like them to be like him because he's such a great, honorable, straightforward person. So I just want to say congratulations to his 25 years, and I have your contract right here, and it says 25 more years, but it's all good, it's all good. So anyways, thank you to each and every one of you guys for coming out, and thank you for supporting the city.
Officer Plant. So shrewd move on moving it to Monday night. Pressure's on, council. I put in my Tuesday nights several years ago. I remember it being 12 sessions, maybe it's only 10 now. The Kyle Citizens Police Academy and now the COP, I've always thought had some of the finest members of our community enrolled in it. You guys are great volunteers. You can always count on you at a moment's notice. There's not enough good things that can be said about the group and what you do for the community. I'm proud to have gone through the program. It's a great program. It was entertaining from beginning to end, and it was such a nice way to get to know so many members of our police department as well and to serve with these fine folks and volunteer with them. So thank you for all your work, Officer Plant, and that and keeping that going.
Thank you.
I was actually going to say the same thing, thank you, because I remember when the citizens on patrol program was first proposed by you, there was, I mean, I would think a not unreasonable skepticism on our part to try to make sure we understood exactly what this program was, and it was always going to live or die by the first round of volunteers and, you know, and that's really where this program has succeeded. Nearly every one of the volunteers is a good person, so, I mean, there's one back there, but I won't say which one. You've built a ton of trust with this city for these programs that you're building and a ton of thanks from us to you for creating programs that we're all really proud of, prouder than we thought we could have been, and we were optimistic. So thank you for helping put these programs together.
Thank you for allowing the trust in me to develop these programs and to give me the time to get it to where it's going to go. We're nowhere near where we want to be, but it's going to be, it's going to continue to be, to get better every month. Yeah, every month, yeah. It'll continue to grow hopefully over the next couple of years, but there's a lot of stuff still undone that we want to do.
Thanks, James.
James, I just want to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just want to say thank you. We've, we go back a long, long way, and what you've done for the city and the Kyle Police Department, I really appreciate it very much, and thank you, citizens on patrol and everybody in the back, very much for all your service.
All right, next up, agenda item number six, introduction of new police and emergency communications employees.
Thank you, Mayor Council, Jeff Barnett, chief of police, for the record. For my groups in the blue shirts and white shirts behind me, if y'all wouldn't, don't leave, we would like to get a group picture outside while we have everybody together. So when we quietly exit after this item, we'll join you and we'll get a photograph outside. So for our next item, Mayor Council, we traditionally bring before you some of our new staff members when we collect a few new employees and can bring you a group at a time. So tonight, we are here to recognize some of our new code enforcement officers and some of our new telecommunications. From the code enforcement aspect, we have two, one brand new and one somewhat newer code enforcement officer that are here serving the needs of the city. Been here for several months now, we have Mr. Duarte Pamplona, great code enforcement officer. He's proving to be a tremendous asset to the city. You already know, many of you have interacted with him. He's doing a great job at trying to beautify our city and to keep in, keep in his mind and his goal, the vision of the city that we have for beautification. He comes to us also after 20 years of service in the military. So you talked earlier about how our, some of our employees and some of our volunteers are people who have servant's heart. He is one of those, and he came to us after a 20-year career in the United States Army. Second, in a recent hire, we have Mr. Humberto Vega, who comes to us from the Dallas area where he served for a couple of cities in the animal control area. He's going to bring that experience over into the code enforcement world. He's already hit the ground running, as you can imagine, and he's doing a great job. And I wanted you to have a face with the name in case you, or as we all move forward with the beautification of the city of Kyle. So I'd like to welcome two code enforcement officers, Duarte Pamplona and Code Enforcement Officer Humberto Vega. Also with me tonight, I have some of our newest telecommunications. These are your 911 operators that serve in the dispatch center. We are blessed to have some tremendous dispatchers on the other end of 911 answering our calls and to answer the other end of our police radios. These are people that we depend on daily. They're out there, they're part of our lifeline at the police department, they're part of your lifeline and ours as members of the community. We're very proud that they've chosen to come to work for the city of Kyle. I want to take a brief second to thank you once again for the recent effort and the support that you've shown for our telecommunications. You recognize that their job is important and that it's very challenging and that it is important to have good quality candidates and then to retain those candidates. So with the work that you've done and the work that our tremendous supervisors, Chrissy and Ashley, have put forth to make sure we have a great 911 center, they have attracted three great candidates. They've come to work for us. We have before you in the back of the room, Ms. Natalie Farrell, Ms. Elizabeth Hughes, and Ms. Megan Bowers. They're going to be on the other end of 911, so you have a friendly face. Now you've got a face with the person on the other end. So if I could ask everybody to just please give them a warm welcome, those are your newest city employees in code enforcement and dispatch.
We'll take five and restart back at 8 o'clock exactly, so thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Thank you. Let me start off with Burleson Street. I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I wanted to say that I did ask our project manager, what's the status, when are we going to wrap this one up? She did ask, talked to the contractor. The contractor kind of told her he was thinking July. She was thinking more of August, but we're hoping he does wrap this up in July. Just to let you know, we are still sitting on the retainage, which is pretty significant. It's over $300,000, so we were hoping that would be an incentive for him to hurry up and wrap it up. So I just want to let you know where we are with that one.
You'd think they'd be in a hurry for it, but...
I would.
Yeah.
Wendy Hill Street and Drainage Project, we're about 65% complete. There will be a traffic switch on Purple Martin, probably tomorrow. They're just moving traffic from one side of the street to the other side. They're going to be using the west half instead of the east side that they're using today. We're still driving on the south side of Wendy Hill, and we're still working on the north half of the road. I do want to mention that, not trying to skip over, but we are working on change order number four, so we do have another one coming in that we're very well aware of. The last presentation that I mentioned to you on that last bullet, we were thinking that completion would be at the beginning of July, but they have discovered a gas line in the way, so they're going to be working on that, trying to get that out, moved out of the way. South Side Wastewater Improvement Project, we're about 84% complete. As you can see, we're right directly in front of the prison and working their way towards the south on that section of line. Treatment Plant Expansion Project, we're about 57% complete. We had a little bit of rain, as you well know. Contractor's still trying to work on Saturdays to try to catch up and make sure that he completes his project on time. We are waiting for an estimate for the dewatering project that we want to possibly add as a change order. It's a major item, and we're hoping the contractor gives us a good price on that so we can add the dewatering system there that we need. Hopefully, we'll get that pretty next month. Again, we're still trying to complete this project by the time of March 2022. Wanted to show these two pictures just so that folks can see how much progress is predictor contractors making. Just in nine months, you can see that we were about 45 feet deep with this structure, and here now, we're at ground level, trying to wrap up this project. So they've moved very well, very fast. Len Creek Interceptor, we're about 48% complete. Boring under the creek is beginning. We have one bore to do there with the wastewater line and with the reclaimed water line. Right now, just to let you know, we have about a month's worth of work remaining in materials, so we'll be working with the contractor to see what we can do to resolve the issue with the materials that he can't seem to get. Well, site number four, talked to our project manager on that one again. Supposed to start this month, that's what the contractor's been telling us, and so we're trying to pin him down on what date exactly we can see him here. So as soon as we get that, we'll let you know. Old Post Road, usually I've kind of go over this first bullet, but I want to tell you that I have one more item to work out with the owners, and I think we'll be able to work that out. And hopefully, at the next council meeting, I'll be bringing back in ordnance with this, moving forward with this trade that we want to do with the owner. So finally making progress on that, so. They did complete their paving on that first, or that south half, that first layer, and what we're doing now is Public Works is going to have to upgrade, or actually install a brand new section of water line there from Enterprise back to County Road 58, 158. Elliot Branch Interceptor, this picture right here is showing you that we're starting the bore underneath the railroad tracks. We do have a water line, I mean, sorry, a wastewater line and a reclaimed water line that we need to put in there, so we started the bore under the railroad tracks. Paramount Subdivision, from what I understand, this should be opening this week. We do have the site on the consent agenda. It's our annual micro-surfacing contract that we have with Viking Construction. Believe this is the last year that we have that contract with them, so we'll probably have to go out and bid it out next year, but we have a real good price on this particular micro-surfacing. It's $3.71 a square yard, which is a very good price for micro-surfacing. We do have a five-year plan, as most of you know. We're on the second year of the five-year plan, and we have three more years already planned out for this project, so you'll be seeing, we may see a new contractor next year, we may see the same contractor next year, but we'll have to go out for bids on the next set of micro that we do.
Do you have the image so we can see the roads?
I don't think it's on there. I do have a list. Councilmember Tobias had asked me to kind of present that, so.
Yes, thank you.
There's quite a few, so I'll just go over them very quickly. We have Hout, McGarrettie, Camilla Parkway, Livock Street, Blanco Street, West South Street, Nance Street, Arbarnot Drive, Caddis Cove, Kip Cove, Bobbin Cove, Farrell Drive, and Dropper, Blue Stem Street, and Primrose Boulevard, Kim Way, Stephen Court, DeChell Run, Brent Boulevard, Keystone Loop, Bow Lane, and Sheep Trail Drive. There's about 20 to 30 streets that we're going to be hitting this year. And if you have any questions.
So last year's micro-surfacing project was a little less than smooth from the perception of the people who were experiencing it. Have they learned lessons? Are we going to, what's the, what's the thought towards the rollout from a communication standpoint and then setting expectations about how long it takes to get the roads set in and those uneven, you know, those uneven lanes, which the streets that were getting lots of complaints are now settled in quite nicely, and so a lot of the complaints are unfounded, but what are your, what are your thoughts on that? Because we get a lot of complaints when these projects get going.
We typically see a lot of complaints with resurfacing. Based on my experience with the last 30, 40 years, whenever we do any kind of resurfacing, we're going to get a complaint, whether it's a chip seal, a micro, even an overlay, which is a nice, really smooth surface. Of course, overlays are very expensive, so you want to do the, get your big bang for the buck and try to do the minimum amount of resurfacing that you can spend your money on, that you need to spend your money on so you can maintain your roadways. Micro is probably one of the better processes to use if you don't have the loose rock that you have with a seal coat. The experience that I've had with seal coat, we traditionally had the loose rock, and there's always a big complaint. Your sweepers had to be out there all the time trying to sweep it up. And we've talked to the contractor, we've already been, I've already been talking to public information to let them know that we're getting ready to do these streets. We don't have a definite date yet from the contractor as to when he's going to get here. He's trying to work his, into his schedule, but he does plan to get us in July. So at this point in time, what I'll do is I'll remind him that let's try to keep those complaints to the minimum as fast as, as much as possible. And the big deal last year was that they weren't rolling it enough or getting enough time to roll it, and so people weren't, weren't used to seeing it that way, I think. They weren't familiar with it, for one thing, so they just didn't know what to expect. I guess they were expecting the nice, smooth overlay.
Right.
And that's not what this is. It's a thin layer of emulsion with rock in it, and it's real sensitive to traffic when if you drive on it too quickly and spin around it, it's going to tear it up. So we just need to try to keep folks advised that it's, stay off it as long as you can. It will be rolled, it will settle down, and it looks great after it had time to cure out. So we'll just make sure we put out more information on that as fast as we can.
Okay, thank you, Leon. Any other questions for Leon?
No. Yeah, that's what referencing consent to number 10 would be. Thank you for explaining that and also the streets that will be affected. Mayor Mitchell brought a good point as far as rolling out when we're going to start these construction projects if we're, could be more ahead of the game, because again, that is one of the things that we do get complaints about, is about those roads, but thank you for explaining the process on how it's going to work and hopefully we get some of these roads done pretty quick.
You're welcome.
It might be good to have, like anticipate the most common, you know, complaints about the unevenness or the fact that you can see your footprints in it, all the pictures from last year, and then show those... last year, and then show those, you know, what it is now and some kind of, just be ready so that when the complaints start coming, we have a nice package that we can show them that, like, what you're experiencing is normal and not out of the ordinary. That would help the council a lot, and it saves you time during that because when we get the complaints, we take up your time, so...
Very well aware of that, yes, sir.
Yeah, so maybe this year, we can maybe come up with some kind of little communication packet on micro-surfacing.
And Mayor, if I may add again, to the residents, again, I brought this up before, you know, these roads are going to need to be repaired and fixed. So, you're going to need to be patient with these construction projects that we're having going on in our city. I know it's time-consuming. I know it can be frustrating. But again, as our city continues to grow, these roads are getting torn up, and we also need to be able to maintain them. So, please be as patient as possible, follow the detours that are in your area, and just understand that, you know, we're trying to improve our roads as best as we can, as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Leon, just real quick, Councilmember Rizzo for the record. You talked about a water line going across Post Road, correct?
That's correct.
So, what is the timeline on that?
We're thinking two to three weeks for that to go in, and then the county's going to drop back in and start making some more repairs on that south half.
So, is that slowing down our project, having to do that, or...
No, they had other things they wanted to work on, so that was kind of a break for them. But hopefully, also with the acquisition of the property at that southern end, hopefully they'll be able to pick up there and continue it towards the intersection and ramp up that intersection. So, that's my desire, is to have that done at the next council meeting so that we can turn Hayes County loose on that south end of the project.
What are you anticipating with the final date on that road as a completion date?
I think initially, they were talking about November. So, they were thinking about three to four months on each section. And so, they're going to be working on the north half, hopefully within the next three to four weeks, I would think. And then they'll do the same thing there, add 26 inches of gravel and four inches of asphalt. And then there's a final lift that we haven't determined yet who's going to put that final lift on, so we're still working with the county on that final lift. Because there's one more layer that needs to go in there, and the plan was to do the whole road at one time so we can get a nice, good finish on it.
All the way through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great. You said Opal is going to be opened up again soon?
Yes, sir. That should be this week, should be this week.
This week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds great. What were the improvements made on Opal?
They widened out to about three lanes, and then I think they went up to the first intersection, so they do curb and gutter, widen it out, and made some improvements at the railroad tracks. But again, I want to point out that the lanes and the tracks are narrow. They do, there are minimums. We do have at least a minimum 10-plus feet there, but they are narrow. So, when people get to them, they're going to wonder about, should this be water? Yes, it should have been water, but we had a big issue with the cost that we're going to end up paying for moving those signals there. It was in millions of dollars.
That's good. I'm glad we're thinking financially on that. But yeah, thank you. I just wanted the residents to know what to expect. I know it's been an inconvenience for some of the residents in our area, but now they know what to expect, and they're going to have a good roadway there. So, thank you. Thank you for the information, Leon.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Leon? All right, next up is our Consent Agenda. I need to pull item number 15. Does anybody else want to pull an item or make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Eight through 14, with the exception of...
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve the Consent Agenda Items Number Eight through 14. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. We need to postpone 15 till after we go back into executive session. So, next up is Agenda Item Number 16, which is an item that has been postponed, and we're going to motion to indefinitely postpone, but I'll go ahead and read it out. Second reading, Inordinate Amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 12.9 acres of land from agricultural AG to mixed use for property located at the northeast corner of Philomena Drive in Button Creek. I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone this item. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kales. Is there any discussion? Alls in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Howard, I see you coming up, but we're actually going to postpone two more of these items, these zoning requests. I want to make sure I got the, no, the next one we can take, item number 17. So, we are going to do that one now, correct? Layman? First reading, Inordinate Amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 4.56 acres of land from agriculture to retail services for property located 145 Layman Road. This item has a public hearing. Mr. Koontz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Howard Koontz. For the record, I'm the Community Development Director. As you stated so quickly, this is a rezoning request for approximately five acres at the, I'm going to call it, the northwest intersection of Layman Road at 150. It's right across the street from Paulus, across the street from the Public Works offices, if you didn't know. Currently, the property is zoned agriculture, Ag, and they have made a request to rezone this to RS, Retail Services. This went to the P&amp;Z a week ago, and they, after very limited discussion, voted unanimously four to nothing to approve the request. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff has recommended it. Really don't have any issues of which we're aware as far as land use goes, so I can make myself available for your questions.
This item has a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing now. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It's now closed. I make a motion to approve. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Floris Kales.
All right, I just have a few questions. I live right by this area, and I work out by it, right across the street, and my fear is this parcel's in between two other parcels. Is that correct?
In between two other parcels?
There's not three on Layman?
There's two hard corners to both of these lots that are involved. The vicinity map that's on the staff report shows that there's actually a larger parcel which fronts 150 and Layman. That is approximately about three and three-quarters, almost four acres. And then there is a tiny, minor parcel that only fronts Layman that's on the far eastern edge, and that's almost exactly an acre.
Okay, so almost all of this is in a flood area?
A large majority of it, yes.
So, can you tell me what the, first of all, what is the city's requirement on building materials as far as parking lots?
Parking areas need to be improved.
So, they would have to create one?
Hard surface durable areas for any parking areas for, you know, whatever gets developed if the zoning is approved, yes.
Okay, so do we know what kind of effect putting concrete in this area would have on Layman Road?
On Layman Road? I don't know that I follow you.
Well, my fear is, this is across the street from Lake Kyle and just up a little bit more. Every time it rains, even after that road has been updated, there's been road closures due to flooding.
This is a fairway southwest of Lake Kyle. This is right across the street from Garcia's Restaurant and the donut place. Yeah, so the low-water crossing is, I'm going to ballpark about 1,000 feet to the northeast, and then the Lake Kyle, the park itself is about a quarter of a mile or more up Layman Road. This is right at the hard corner at the traffic light on 150.
So, probably less than a quarter mile is Lake Kyle, correct?
I'd say that's about...
And do you think this would have any effect, building out over here using concrete, which is not absorbent? Do you think that would affect any kind of flooding?
It would. It's in the basin, yeah, without question. The water that backs up from Lake Kyle comes back across Layman, it comes through the, a little bit further to the north of this property, and then through this property and under 150, and then right past the Sonic where the restaurant is there, and then goes under 35, and keeps headed back towards the west to the south end of downtown Kyle.
So, do you think this, the building of any property here would affect the flood or Lake Kyle? Or the closure of that road?
If built improperly. I mean, the whole point of stormwater management, the whole point of developing properties is actually to improve the conditions downstream. It's the unchecked development that generally adds to stormwater velocity and stormwater volumes. And if they can create stormwater detention, that releases water into the basin at the pre-development rate, then the development of the property should be negligible to the downstream, one would hope.
So, it was under, I assume that when they updated Layman Road, they also worked on the stormwater drainage? Is that correct?
The engineer would probably be better suited to answer that than I.
Okay. Because again, even after we spent two years with a closed Layman Road, it still floods, and they still shut it off. So, it's not, it's, my concern is not putting retail there. My concern is putting anything with concrete or anything that doesn't absorb water in that area.
Agreed. Yep, I believe you.
So, is there a plan to use something besides concrete?
Currently, no. Tonight's question is a land use question. It's not a development question. So, what they're asking us tonight is can we? And then if the answer to that is yes, they'll come back to us again and say, how can we? And that's when staff goes through the technical manuals and the data of what they're allowed to do per the law and what they're not allowed to do. So, we're not there yet.
And do we have laws that say, that support the flood areas? Besides building up a little bit higher, because I know that is one of them, but again, we've spent significant time and money to make Layman a little more drivable, and even after that, it still floods.
I believe you, yes. I've seen it myself. I've been cut off from Lake Kyle where I had to go all the way around my knee to get to my elbow. Yeah, I know, I know what that's about. But I think there's a number of issues that go along with that, probably the development in the upper part of the basin that happened faster than Layman was actually designed for. Layman probably wasn't expected to be at the elevation that it is. Had it been able to be elevated at the time that it was reconstructed, the water could have gone under and we could have kept the road open, but that was just a trade. That was, what was able to be done at the time is what was done at the time. So, will this contribute to that? Yes. Is it measurable? I don't think it is, no. But I know that the processes and the procedures that are put in place are designed to attenuate the negative aspects of stormwater. And so, the stormwater management should, should at least keep it no worse than it is now, if not help it.
Okay, because I know that the flood planes have been updated. Have we updated our city to coincide with those as well?
I believe we're, if not done, then we're in the process. You're referring to Atlas, moving to the Atlas 14 standard as opposed to the previous standard?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all on. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, excuse me, I just have one. I know exactly where this place is, Howard. It's a very busy intersection, and by all means, I'm sure any kind of retail would benefit from that area there in that case. The only concern I have is the traffic and just seeing the heavy traffic and where somebody would have to be able to exit out and enter in, especially if they're going up 150, like, towards Water Leaf. Would there be any, I mean, I know you have your stoplight on the corner, but it's just, that's the, kind of what the only thing I've got concerned is just if we put something there or somebody decides to develop retail, it's going to be really, really hard to get in and out. And I just kind of look at it as a safety issue on that.
There are certain metrics that need to be followed in site design, and that's a Tech dot Road as well. So, they're going to have to get permission if they were to put any type of access directly onto 150. Again, we're getting way down the road from what's actually being asked of you this evening, but my expectation is that when they come forward, probably all the access will come from Layman. They're going to want to get to the traffic light anyway. You're not going to be able to reasonably make that eastbound motion onto 150 with the way the traffic comes down that hill. You're not going to want to play that game. And the amount of traffic that stacks at 150, I mean, it goes all the way back to and past Hill Street at the wrong time of the evening. So, being able to make across the westbound lanes to get into the eastbound lanes of 150 also wouldn't be to anyone's benefit when you could just get in the stacking at Layman and use the traffic light. So, I'm not, I'm concerned about it, but I also believe that it can be overcome with sensible design, which we'll talk about, you know, at the next step if this were to succeed this evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Piggybacking off of what Tobias says, I will say, and I do understand that this is zoning, totally understand that. But in order to decide if the zoning that you're asking for, which is retail, is sufficient, there are things that I think we need to look at, and one being flooding and two being traffic. Those are legit. I already sit on that Layman highway, Layman stoplight every single day, and I am trying to work hard with Tech Dot to get basic necessities on 150, like lights and railing, which I think is dire for that area. So, I find it hard to believe that they're just going to come in because we put this retail store here and they're going to fix our traffic problems. And so, it's, again, do we stick the buggy in front of the horse and just hope that it all kind of works itself out? And I don't know, because I can't imagine we're going to build a real nice retail store on five acres or less. Because three or four acres of that is already in floodplain, so I think it's going to make it a little bit difficult.
Any other comments? I think we have a motion on the floor. The, yeah, the flood situation is that, you know, if we zone it multifamily, if we zone it industrial or retail or residential of any kind, all the flood standards apply across all the zonings. So, I don't know that discussing flooding will help you narrow down on an appropriate use. And then as far as traffic goes, hard corners are very good for traffic, because if you put residential multifamily there, you're actually drawing traffic there as opposed to the through traffic, like a gas station or whatnot. So, anyway, any, I think we have a motion on the floor, so anyone else? Alls in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails three to two. So, I'm going to make a, let's see, how do we do this?
It should be four to...
Is it four to? I'm sorry. One, two, three, four. Motion passes four to two. You threw me for a loop deck, sorry. I was just counting left and right. All right, motion passes four to two. Next up, Agenda Item Number 18. This item, we're going to, and Agenda Item Number 19, we're going to request for postponement. But we can't postpone because they have a public hearing, right? So, we have to open the public hearing? We have to do all that? All right, so I am going to step out on Agenda Item Number 18 and let Mayor Protem take over.
Agenda Item 18, Inordinate Amending Chapter 53 Zoning, the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 10.81 acres of land from retail services RS and a multifamily residential R33 at 20139 Highway 35. This item has a public hearing. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item can come forward now. If there's no one wishing to speak on this public hearing, Scott, real quick, do I need to keep this open? I think our plan is to postpone this item, correct? Okay. All right, we will go ahead and postpone this item.
Yeah, can you close the public hearing?
Oh, close the public hearing, okay. This public hearing is now closed, and this item is postponed until the following meeting? Okay. Item Number 19. Chapter 53 Zoning, the City of Kyle, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to rezone 11.08 acres of land from agriculture to single-family R1. This also has a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this public hearing can come forward now. Seeing that no one wishes to speak, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Howard, this is your item.
Yes, it will be postponed.
Oh, this one's postponed as well? Okay, sorry. I will go ahead and postpone this item as well. Item is postponed until the next meeting. Agenda Item Number 20. Is this one postponed as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Man, all right, awesome. Item Number 20 is postponed. Until the next meeting. Item 21. This is uh, your item?
Council member Flores?
Yes, sir, thank you, that was quick. I was kind of nervous. All right, if I could have, uh, if I could have people from Capital Idea come up to the podium, please. I'm just going to do a brief intro and then I'm going to let them take it over from there. So I'm asking for consideration for the city to budget and allot money to fund a partnership with Cap- Capital Idea. A program that offers scholarships to non-traditional low-income students. This funding would stay here in the city of Kyle and would be utilized by residents who qualify. The money would be used to assess and enroll non-traditional students into a program which offers assistance to 30 different careers to include healthcare, which is a much-needed career for our city. Capital Idea is a pro, is a program Representative Z- Weiner has diligently advocated for at the state level. If the city agrees to a partnership, all funds will be doubled through a matching grant. I've heard several council members reference things we can do to create a beacon for the city. However, through this partnership, the city can become a beacon. I'll turn it over to Capital Idea so they can present a brief explanation regarding the services they provide.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, uh, council members. My name is Jeff Thompson, a retired pastor living here in Kyle and a leader in the Corridor Interfaith Alliance for Families. Our mission is to help give voice to the needs of the most vulnerable people in Hayes County. Uh, we're connected with Central Texas Interfaith, which does the same kind of work over a 10 county area in Central Texas. We've worked here at Hayes County for about four years and one of the things we have accomplished is to lobby for Capital Idea uh, with our Hayes County Commissioners Court. Um, they have voted unanimously to fund Capital Idea uh, for the years to, to 2020 and 2021. Uh, we have worked with Representative Aaron Zwiener to help secure adult career education funds from the state of Texas. Uh, we here in the Corridor IAF don't receive any of these funds. It all goes to, to uh, students who are in need of college education. It is simply our effort to help lift people out of poverty. So we thank uh, Council Member Yvonne Flores-Cale for her advocacy uh, and for Capital Idea here this evening. Uh, I have with me Eva Reyes Iverino, uh, who is Deputy Executive Director for Capital Idea. Uh, and now I'd like to introduce uh, Consuelo Castillo, who is a graduate of the Capital Idea Program and of ACC to tell you her story.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm Consolo Castillo. I am a graduate of ACC of class of 2009. Um, I graduated with a degree in dental hygiene with an associate applied in science with the support of Capital Idea. I currently work and own a home here in Kyle. I've been a resident for 11 years now. And let me tell you a little bit about myself. Um, when I was six years old, my parents divorced, leaving my mother to raise six children with no education past sixth grade or a career or experience in anything except raising children. And leaving our family with a hardship that no one should ever experience. And so I realized at a very young age that a higher education was the answer to a better life. Um, I became a mother myself at the young age of 15. And even then, with the statistics against me, I knew that the answer to many of the new obstacles I would face now in life would be to continue my education. And I graduated high school in three years. I graduated number seven in my class and I decided to go on to college. And I was determined not to be a statistic. Um, I found the means to attend. Um, but after my second semester at ACC at the age of 18, I found myself struggling to cover the cost for my family's basic needs, to focus on my education and to raise the two children I had now. Um, but thanks to Capital Idea and their sponsorship, um, at this moment in my life, I was able to have all the support I needed to continue my education. And after my third child's birth, um, with a newborn, like any newborn, I had additional costs and expenses. And even though there are other programs out there to assist the needy, um, they too have their limits and caps. And um, sure, there could have been other outlets for assistance like getting a loan. Um, but everyone knows you need to have credit for a loan and that was an unrealistic solution for someone in my situation. Um, I remember one summer, my TANF assistance was taken away because according to the state rules, after so many semesters of college education, you are no longer qualified to receive assistance. Um, but my education wasn't complete. So without TANF and no FAFSA that summer semester, I found myself struggling to pay basic bills like electricity. Capital Idea was able to secure me a sponsor to help me pay that electric bill that summer. And thanks to their assistance, it allowed me to continue to focus on my education. Um, now, the reason I continued to overcome these obstacles was beca- because I came to college with a clear mindset of the goals and achievements I wanted to obtain. These included a better future for my children, the opportunity to raise them, to help society and not have to depend on it. Um, and I had learned from my mother, teachers and my Capital Idea mentors to have confidence, courage and faith that there was nothing I would ever face that could hold me back. Um, but it wasn't just handed to me because I qualified. Capital Idea has a great vetting process that includes multiple interviews, tests and discussions of what it is you as a student would like to achieve and how your next steps will allow you to become a model citizen for the community. Um, Capital Idea not only helped me, but it helped me be a better version of myself by guiding me in a process that otherwise could have been overwhelming or near impossible with three children. But it showed me also that with the right support team, anything is achievable. Um, I have been a dental hygienist for 12 years and I continuously choose to better myself. I currently as well serve in the Army Reserves. Um, I have been in the reserves for four years and recently just returned from my first deployment to the Middle East. I joined the military service to serve my country and further continue my education um, to achieve my doctorates as a dentist. My daughter graduated from Hayes High School and is currently in her sophomore year completing courses to obtain a degree as a registered nurse. Um, and though I graduated from school with the help of Capital Idea over 12 years ago, I am here today because I believe strongly and without a doubt in this program through helping further the education of those who otherwise may not have a chance or a support team. Capital Idea's program doesn't just help an individual, but it helps families and communities all in all together. And that's me. And this is Ms. Eva.
So Consuelo is one of our successes, but we have 1,900 out there of the successes, a lot of them in Hayes County, not only in Kyle, Beulah and other areas. There are some points that I want to emphasize about Capital Idea. We are employer-driven, so our students are here to stay, not to obtain a career and then leave our area. And because we're employer-driven, we're also training them in careers that are in demand in the Central Texas area, like registered nurses, surgical tech, medical tech, uh, medical lab tech, IT and the trades. Uh, our career in nursing is one of the most popular ones, as well as the one in dental hygienist. And our employers want professionals who are going to look like the people they're going to serve. That's why they hire all of the Capital Idea graduates without problems. We focus in careers, like I said, that are, are in demand, that pay high wages, that provide benefits and a career path. Because we want to ensure that our low-income adults, that once they finish our training, that they are able to reach self-sufficiency. Uh, I'm not sure if everybody received some of the information, but you will see the results in terms of our evaluations from the Ray Marshall Center, that our graduates become taxpayers and uh, what is the return on that investment. One of the components of our sponsorship is that Capital Idea partners with entities like Austin, training entities like Austin Community College and Temple College. I know here in Hayes County, we have ACC. We provide what is called our secret sauce, which is a case management. It's a career navigator who from day one until graduation works day in and day out with our students. They work on personal areas, academics and the financial. And they want to make sure that we discuss with them and provide the assistance needed, like the sponsorship of covering tuition books and fees, childcare assistance, emergency assistance, transportation assistance and anything else related to their education so that there are no obstacles for their success. On average, our graduates complete their education in three years and a half. Like I mentioned, our results are that in Central Texas, we have 1,900 completers. And one of the things that we never expected that we were going to obtain out of each graduate is the, the effect that they have in their family. Because now we're breaking that cycle in, in terms of more educa- higher education. For every graduate, now the conversation is not with their children about, am I going to go to college? But the conversation has shifted to which college are you going to be attending? So investing in Capital Idea in one student, technically you are investing in the whole family. And one person that we train results in more members in that family that receive training. I know that uh, it was mentioned already by Council Member Flores that the investment that you make from Kyle to Capital Idea will be also matched by I- I State granted adult career and education. So it's not just going to be your funds, but other individuals' funds as well so that we can serve more people here in Kyle. I'll stop here and take any questions.
I would just like to extend um, on the PowerPoint that they sent, sent to us. If you go to eight PowerPoint, slide eight, it talks about in specific Hayes County and the city of Kyle. So 82 or 9% of the overall students that they serve reside in Hayes County. 44% or 36 people, I would say reside in Kyle and 92% of those are women. 81% are Hispanic, 13% are black, 6% are white, 47 have, 47% have kids and the average age at intake is 26.
Yes, so those are your Kyle citizens that we're serving right now. And we would like to be able to expand and serve more because right now we're limited on the careers that we can fund. We're very focused on hi- uh, on healthcare, but not on high-tech because we don't have the funds to, uh, we have a funder who is very focused on healthcare and that's the only careers we can offer right now.
So, sorry, Councilmember Rizzo for the record, what's the yearly cost that you put into a student?
$5,000 and that covers tuition book fees, uh, our overhead, case management and any other emergency assistance.
Councilor Bretschel.
I have a few questions. Um, can you explain slide number 10 to me where it says taxpayer ROI?
Yes, so let me go to that slide. So basically what they, uh, the, the Ray Marshall, you're talking about this one, right? The long-term?
No, the one before that, or after that, I'm sorry.
Oh, page 10, I'm sorry. It just talks, it, it refers back to this page that in 10 years, your return on the investment is a, is a 165% over 10 years. That's what they calculated. So it's 9% annually on the return on the investment. So when they did their evaluation, they said it was a 501% over the 10 years that you, you start seeing taxpayers' funds back into the sys- I mean into your city on the area. Because of the wages and the impact of the wages from our students, I mean graduates at that point.
And they did that, they did that study for here in Texas?
Yes, yes, yeah, for our, they did it based upon our students and then a similar group. So they could make a comparison on that return.
Okay, and then um, there was no number given as far as budgeting for um, the program?
They, they asked for the city?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we were talking about $100,000. And that, that will cover 20 students.
We, yeah, we didn't set a, a set number, but yes.
Yes.
A roundabout number that we, we were looking towards our goal ultimately would be to fund $100,000, which would be matched by um, the contributor.
Yes.
And then if we were to commit to giving that, would that only go towards people here in Kyle?
Yes, yes.
So nobody else in Hayes County would be eligible to use those funds?
The contract, you will set it up and, and specify that is for Kyle residents.
Okay, thank you.
Travis, Travis County and the city of Austin treasure this program for mainly Travis County residents uh, to the tune of 2.5 million. So it's something that they treasure a lot and we would like to ask you to uh, have that same kind of commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions, comments?
I just have a question about the match again. So whatever the city of Kyle were to uh, give towards this program, it would be matched through the state?
Yes, sir, we have, that, yes, it will be matched that way.
And we already, we already, so uh, the commissioners passed this for a county level. So we have funds available for Kyle people.
Yes.
Because the county has committed them already for 2020 and 2021, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And that is, that was more for Hayes County. So we're service, servicing Kyle and the other cities like Beulah and others.
How long do the, uh, the agreements and the contracts usually last? Is it two years, is that standard?
I would say it's not that a standard because in, in Austin, we have it for, uh, for two years and then they have extensions. So right now we have, we are in the last year of a five-year contract because of the extensions.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just one last question, uh, so the uh, if we're going to have that match, would, uh, for 20 students, we could do 50,000 and then the match would be another 50,000?
Correct.
That would do the 20 students?
Correct.
Correct, so we could look at maybe 50,000?
You can look at 50,000.
Or we can help 40 students.
Or we could do 40, that's kind of where I was going.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, we can do 20, we can do 40, depends on the amounts. Yes, but the matches will still be there. Because what, what, what we need is the funds to be able to match with the state. That's what, that's the requirement.
Okay.
And this, the state dollars would apply to Kyle only as well? Because we've had situations in the past where matched dollars, we get like, for example, we did a program for COVID rule, or the snowbit or COVID where we participated in a broader program that got matched and they use all the money that we put forward to apply to our businesses in this case. And all the, the rest of the money got spent elsewhere. We actually received less services than had we just allowed them to, you know, do the program. So would the, would the match dollars also apply only to?
I would say that the way we have been handling, we've been doing that with the funds. Like for example, the funds that we receive from the county commissioners, whatever match we were able to receive, a state would in Hayes.
Okay.
Yes.
And how much, I'm sorry, I must have missed it at the beginning. How much does Hayes do, the county?
20, 30, 30, 30? $30,000.
Okay, they, Hayes does 30?
It was 20,000, in 2020, it was 25 and then 30 this year.
They increased it to 30.
So my general thoughts are that we, there was a time that the city of Kyle did a lot of that, but basically donating the, in the budget to nonprofits. You know, we had several different organizations that we supported. And before I got here, all that was gone. So in our current budget, you know, we don't have any dollars for these kinds of programs, which is not to say that we shouldn't or should, I'm not making a statement. What I'm saying is that that's not in the, the purview of the budget at this point in time. So I don't know if other folks have different nonprofits that they've been thinking about as well or if this is something we want to bring up during the budget or ahead of the budget. Uh, my thoughts is just to make sure that if we're going to do something, that we're kind of trying to take a holistic, because it can be this one and then the next meeting, another council member brings something forward and then another council member brings, because we all have programs that we care about. This is obviously a great one. You know, there are a lot of really good programs. And so I just don't know exactly where to go from here. Councilor Ellison.
Well, Mary, uh, you stated a lot of my thoughts originally. Three summers ago, we had wholly committed come to us uh, with an ask. Uh, we didn't support them in any kind of thing. I know that in the summer of, it might've been that same summer, it might've been 2019, same thing was asked, uh, I was accused of not supporting the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center uh, from that. Uh, but I think that is, uh, it's, you know, nothing against this group. I think, like you said, we have to look at it holistically. Uh, but that's kind of the issue that we run into is it's, it's one nonprofit or, or organization that is obviously, uh, does great work uh, from one council member and then another council member has their, their idea and then that can it just, we, like I said, when I, when I, when it was brought up last time, I believe it was two, three budgets ago, um, I'd like to see a system where it was equitable, where all nonprofits and organizations within our area could apply for these funds. Because I know there's a lot of uh, organizations in our area, large, small and medium, that would love to have a piece of that pie, if you will, and, and do their great work also. So I, I agree with what the mayor is saying and, and looking at this holistically. Right now, we don't have an allocation in the budget for um, supporting nonprofits. Once again, I, I agree with the mayor, not making a statement that we should or shouldn't. But these are- but these are the things that we need to be cognizant of when these are brought forward. And I just want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't stay, I didn't say, I believe it was Casuela Castillo, "Thank you for sharing your story. It's very inspiring. Thank you for your service to our country." And I can see that you've, you've been an example probably to your children, and kudos to your daughter and her, her journey as well. But I think it's, it obviously sounds like a fantastic program. Obviously, you all are getting support from other jurisdictions and different things like that. But we need to look at, you know, does Austin have something like that, where they have a way to vet and able to give everybody an equitable opportunity to apply for funding from the city in order to do their good works and good deeds as well?
Turned out. Conserv energy. Any, any other thoughts?
I think, you know, I just want to emphasize on what Councilmember Ellison said was, great work. Your students, you brought one of your shiny examples to here, you know, and I want to commend you on that, because that's a great story. I mean, that one hit home a little bit as a teenage father as well. You know, I know what that struggle's like. I know it's real. It's hard. It's a life I don't wish on anybody, because it's a difficult one, to go to school, to work, to raise children. That's a tough life. So thank you for all you do for these young people. And I think it's something as a city we might have to look at, as how we look at nonprofits, and how we maybe in the future funds, have a way for them to apply, so that way maybe we can touch more people's lives. But thank you for being here today.
I think Buda has a program similar to what Councilwoman Ellison was saying, where they have a certain amount, and the different nonprofits can apply. There's the question of auditing. Anytime cities donate funds to nonprofits, you have to make sure that the dollars are used in certain ways, and it can become cumbersome and then competitive when, you know, we're all putting, you know, finite resources out there. So just a lot for us to think through, and we're just, we don't have the infrastructure in place to be able to fit you into a slot right now. But I think that it's certainly worth having a conversation, because the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, the Food Bank, this program here, there's several other, you know, pretty great programs that, you know, we could, we could potentially, you know, move towards. But there's always, no matter how you do it, there's always going to be more asks than there will be, you know, money to, to meet that need. And so the thought for the city has been historically, I think, that we're going to stay out of the funding nonprofit business, but, you know, it's a new day, a new council, so it's certainly something we can bring up in the budget workshop coming up, maybe to try to set something like that up, so.
Well, and if you're interested in, like it was mentioned in a conversation about what city of Austin or Travis County are doing with their RFP systems, let us know, so we can connect you with someone there.
Yeah.
I'm a Hayes resident, and I would like to see more on workforce development here.
Right, yeah, it's certainly a good program. So thank you all for coming and presenting to us.
Do you take funds from other nonprofits as well?
Not necessarily funds. We work more with foundations.
Foundations.
Individual donors, and we collaborate and partner with other foundations, I mean, with other nonprofits, to either refer students to them or vice versa, depending on the needs of our students.
I know a nonprofit that usually gives out quite a few scholarships here in the area, and I think this is a worthwhile opportunity for them that they might want to partner with, so.
That'd be a great opportunity. We haven't really had that.
Please email me your information.
Yes, thank you.
And I want to say thank you to the diocese for giving it consideration. I am more than aware of the past diocese decisions, but I felt like maybe we are moving on from like our past, and we should, this is something we should consider, only because thirty-six of our residents already used it. That means they have contributed to us a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for our residents. So, and we are grateful for that. So, and I'm grateful that you guys even considered it. So I want to say thank you, and budget's coming up, so fingers crossed that maybe we can, you know, stay on speed dial. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, agenda item number twenty-two, Proposition F, ordinance update on plans for soliciting public input. This is from the task force.
Yes, thank you. I'll go ahead and just lead us in, and then I'm going to pass it on to my colleagues, Councilmember Tobias and Rizzo, to give you all an update of the amazing job they did this past Saturday. But we just wanted to very briefly give you all an update on what we've brainstormed and what we've got in the works, and what we've got going on, and as well as plug our survey that we have, so residents can go and fill that out. The task force did meet, thanks to the council for support in creating that. Councilmember Rizzo, Councilmember Tobias, and myself, along with staff liaison Samantha Armbruster. We did identify that we have some actionable items already proposed in our budget, from the analyst position to the IA Pro software and Blue Team software for PD, as far as handling complaints and compliments, and handling that in a more modern way than the archaic way that it's currently being, everything's being kept up with. So, and that way, we can also make it very transparent and able for residents and anyone who wants that information to be able to have access to it. The task force has agreed that we are going to collect citizen input from various different ways. We did compile a survey that will be in the works for two weeks. It is already out there. I didn't prep staff to have that available, but we have that survey online. It's very short residence, so nothing very long at all. It's five questions, very quick, less than two minutes probably to complete. So we encourage all residents, whether you voted for Prop F or whether you didn't, we're actually purposely soliciting comments from both, both ends of that spectrum. So please go and fill that out. That will be running through June twenty-second, if I'm not mistaken. We will also have an open house this coming Friday before the Dialogue for Peace and Progress event, starting at five-thirty, I believe. Samantha can correct me if I'm wrong, but five-thirty to six-thirty, and so we'll have that, oh, yes, cityofkyle.com/propf. Is where you can find that survey. So yes, the open house coming this Friday, starting at five-thirty. Then we'll have our dialogue event, which will be talking about various different things as well. We wanted to do all these things before our next budget work session on June twenty-sixth, so we can come back with any findings or any ideas that were, to help contribute to the budget process if necessary. But I'm going to stop talking right now, because I would really love to, five to six-thirty, I'm sorry, thank you Samantha, five to six-thirty on that open house this Friday. If you want to come by City Hall, we'll be just, it'll be very informal. We'll be taking questions, answering questions, helping educate about what Prop F was about, how much of what was changed in the charter, what was, what stayed the same, and then looking at those general ideas of why maybe people voted for it, or why maybe people voted against it. But like I said, I'm going to allow Councilmember Tobias and Councilmember Rizzo, because I actually want to hear about this as well. They had a great day at Market Days this past Saturday, and I would like for them to share a little bit about that experience, and then, of course, anything they'd like to add that I might have missed. Thank you.
Councilmember Rizzo, for the record, actually had a great day hanging out there with my high school buddy, Michael Tobias. Felt like the old days, Mike.
Yep. It was hot.
It was hot. It definitely was hot, but the people were very responsive. We handed out quite a few of the cards out there, had great conversations. I know one gentleman had an hour-long conversation with you, Councilmember.
Oh, yes.
And it looked like it was very interesting. But it was, it was a great event. We got, I think, a little bit of feedback already from the cards that we passed out. We also had a QR code there that they could log on and fill it out right there on the spots. It was great. And it seemed like people were very interested in Prop F for the most part, so I'm glad that we went out there, we participated. Market Days was great. We had great attendance, and it was just fun to be back in the public.
Yes, we had a, it was a very interesting Saturday, and of course, thank you, Sarah, for us and in your team for being out there as well, helping out. It looks like so far, when it comes to the survey, we have up to twenty-two people that have already completed it, which is, which is good. And having a conversation with some of the people who are out there, you know, Robert out there, we're visiting with people, and it was good to see the people out there at Market Days, and some of the people didn't realize that, you know, we had this Proposition F on the ballot last, last November. One person stated that he didn't vote for it, and I tried to get some feedback on why, and it was just different kind of feelings that he had, referencing what was going on, trying to understand what our direction was for our police department. Of course, it's to basically not only just have more data research done for the residents, but also to be able to try to have more transparency with our police department and our community. That's where the main thing was. And of course, you know, the subject changed to the unfortunate and tragic situation that happened earlier that morning in Austin with that mass shooting going on. So conversation turned to that. But overall, we got some good feedback. A lot of people were interested in the meeting, the actual open house for Friday, and also was letting them know that we also have a Piece of Progress event right afterwards, and we'd like for them to attend that as well. But as far as the Prop F community survey, kind of the three questions that we have is, again, did you vote for Prop F, yes or no? You know, if you didn't, you know, did you participate? The other question would be, did you vote for Prop F? If so, why or why not? And the other question was, what were you most motivated to vote and for against it? And so there's different feedback of numbers of the survey, of how many people put in for it. So it's going to be very interesting this Friday, when we have the open house, if we can have more conversations with the individuals that do show up, and we can hope to get this rolling, so we can be able to get the ordinance in place. I know Councilwoman Ellison is very passionate about that, and so we want to go ahead and get this going, so we can have a direction for our police department and also for the community.
I thought the, the, the three different statements about why you voted for it were really well thought out, so I don't know who came up with those statements, but they're all three very different, and I think hit at a different motivation for why people may or may not have voted for or against it. So it took me a while to try to think through which were those I would pick, so. Who came up with that, may I ask?
I think it was a team collaboration.
Just a team collab? I like it.
Yeah, team collab, and just honestly, we, we just looked hard at the language, and we pulled out what the main parts and meat of the language were.
It's solid. It's really good, because it's three different kind of ways of thinking about what, you know, an oversight committee might could be, so that's pretty cool. So I, I'm, I'm really proud of you all for moving the direction that you're moving. My optimism for Prop F is gaining as, as this time is, you know, moving by, so I think we're likely to have a good outcome here. So thank you for your work on that. I know it's not easy. I know it's, you know, we're all a little nervous about it, but at the same time, I think you all are all three leading us well here, so.
Especially when we're looking at the data analysis that we've been so desperately needing. And what I really liked about it was the quarterly reporting, to where we can hopefully be able to get some information out to our public of the situations that's going on in our city, whether we're having an increase in DWI cases, or arrests, or PIs, or burglary buildings. That kind of statistics could really show our citizens what our brave police officers are doing out there. And if we see a spike in certain types of crimes, we can be able to address it at that time. And we can also be able to see if there's any other issues going on within our city. We can start getting our citizens more aware of whether it's truancy going, issues going on, or other domestic violence cases that are arising. We can be able to address those if we need to as a city and as a police department, to where we can have that transparency and be able to help those in, in need, and also to showcase our, our police department of the great job that they do every day, in that sense.
To finish, I thought it was a great work session when we were coming up with how to present this and get it out to the public. I'm glad that Samantha was there, helping us stay in the right direction. Sometimes we can steer off a little bit, but she kept us focused, and we were able to all collaborate and do a great job, and I'm thankful that I was able to be a part of it. It was great, so it's a great team.
Anything else to add? You said the, the, the public hearing, not public hearing, the town hall, what, what do you?
Yeah, five to six-thirty this Friday.
This Friday, okay, all right. If there's nothing else, we'll move on. All right, last item is agenda item number three, second reading approve and ordinance, oh, we have item fifteen too, but we're going to bring that back after exec. Page, okay. Approving ordinance amending the city's approved budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one by increasing the total appropriations for expenditures, eight million for the general fund, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for park development fund, four-point-five million from, for Uptown Central Park, Heroes Memorial Park projects, three-point-five billion for twenty-twenty-one road bond program, two-hundred thousand for Christmas lighting and decoration on Center Street, and then one-seventy-five for the decorative lights. So I'm going to actually follow the caption that Jennifer put together to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve budget amendments except, oh, we have two, we had two, one was six-one. All right, so everything, I'd like to make a motion to approve everything except for the three-point-five million for the twenty-twenty-one road bond program and the one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for the decorative lights.
Could we clarify that motion?
It's everything that was approved. Sorry, it was, yeah, I thought, I didn't, I didn't realize that we had two that weren't unanimous. Everything that was unanimous at the last one in one motion is the way I intended it for it to be.
So the unanimous, unanimous votes were for the, the two park projects, those budget amendments to the general fund? So that was unanimous?
And the two-hundred thousand for the Christmas lights was unanimous. The one-seventy-five for the, the tower was not, and then the three-point-five for the road bonds was not. So, yeah, the two roads and the Christmas lights.
I thought the three-point-five was seven.
No, we have a, we had a dissenter over here.
Oh, okay.
Thought we had broken down by four.
Yeah. So is that clear? I'm sorry, I, I think I made it worse somehow, trying to combine them. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. I'd like to make a motion to approve the three-point-five million dollars for the twenty-twenty-one road bond program amendment.
Does that have a question?
Sorry, there's a motion on the table, and then I'll get him. Sorry.
Second.
All right, moved by Mayor, second by Mayor Protim, that we approve three-point-five million dollar budget amendment for the twenty-twenty-one road bond program. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Ellison.
And I should have got this one, the last one, but Pervez, just point of clarification. So for the two-hundred thousand that we approved, that will not be from the general fund budget amendment, that is from park dedication funds, correct?
That's correct.
Got it, awesome.
Yeah, it's all as amended at the last meeting, I think. Yeah, that's a good clarification, so, all right.
Yeah, it's, it gets my vote.
Yeah, there you go. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries six to one, and I'll make a motion to approve the one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar budget amendment for the decorative lights and historic water tower.
Second.
Moved by Mayor, second by Mayor Protim. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
This will also be from park dedication funds?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to three. All right, so we're going to wait on fifteen. Is there any other items that we need to take up now before exec? City manager's report.
This always takes me a little bit of time to get this online version going. There we go. And let's see if it'll respond here. Okay, it's moving now. We had just a great presentation about our Juneteenth activities, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on here. I think you just got a great update on that, but the information is on the slide for those who are watching. We do have our next skate night coming up at the Ash Pavilion, June eighteenth, six to eight-thirty PM. Bring your own skates. I think in honor of Father's Day, they are letting dads skate free, if I hear correctly. Maybe, maybe. We have movies at the lake again on June twenty-fifth. This time, we are showing Spider-Man. So this is a free opportunity to sit at the Lake Kyle Pavilion and watch a movie with our neighbors. Bring a blanket, bring a chair, and come and enjoy the movie. Our next mass food distribution event is Saturday, June twenty-sixth, from eight to eleven at the ACC campus. And as always, volunteers are needed. And thank you in advance to the council that, that has been consistently showing up for that.
They won't be there on that one.
Well, that's a good point.
That's right.
That's the budget, budget workshop. So we need more volunteers this time. We are getting close to our Independence Day fireworks show. And that is Sunday, July fourth, approximately nine PM. So you'll see, we have a radio station that we've been tuning into, KAJI eighty-eight point seven for the choreographed music. As usual, the viewing is not allowed on the golf course property itself, but people find many, many locations all around town to see those fireworks. This year, we'll have some very special fireworks for the community. So please attend that if you can. It'll be a great event. And then finally, our budget calendar. Yes, June twenty-sixth, we do have our work session number two, so please come here for that. And then you'll see our certified tax roll on the twenty-fifth. We'll follow that up with our budget work session number three, which will be on the thirty-first. And that is my report.
All right, executive session.
Just before, Scott, did you have anything on the vaccine you want to say from this past weekend?
Yeah, I can give some numbers on that. For those who were there, if you want to provide some anecdotes, oh, that was bad.
I just wanted to thank the staff, Jerry, Julie, for being there, everybody that participated there, those that went out and, you know, set up the barricades. It was a team effort, the National Guard. What a great group of young people. They make the process efficient and professional and they do it with a smile. It's great. They're very helpful. It's great to have them have that resource here in Kyle. And I believe we had two hundred and fifty-one or fifty-seven?
How many, Jared?
I think it was.
I'm trying to get that.
I've, I've got it in front of me, hold on.
It was between two fifty and three hundred.
It was, it was two hundred and fifty-one re, second doses of the Moderna and seven doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson first house. And I just want to thank Jerry for all his help. Jerry, thanks for all you do. It went great. Thanks for being there all day on a Sunday. That's going above and beyond, but, but thanks, Julie as well. Y'all made the experience great. Thank y'all.
And, and Scott, I know you wanted to announce too that four hundred and seventy-three pounds of food was collected.
Yes.
It's from the library.
Yeah, we've, we've done some really great things recently. So yes, kudos to staff for, for all the great programs we have going on. But yes, thank you for bringing that forward.
Pursuant to Chapter five-five-one Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics, pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section five-five-one dot zero seven-one, milestone PID, sign code, automated metering infrastructure, Texas Lehigh Agreement, City Lights and Kyle Marketplace subdivision development, site-specific declaration of covenants, restrictions, and easements for the Heroes Memorial Tracks, BB Road Development Agreement.
Meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. I'm going to bring up agenda item number fifteen and make a motion to postpone till the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Start again.
Moved by the mayor, second by Councilmember Rizzo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.